In at five oh one P M. Opening exercises, roll call.
Ahern.
Here.
Alexandrov.
Here.
Blazevich.
Here.
Engler.
Here.
Kostalnik.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Mattis.
Here.
White.
Here.
And D'Senzo.
Here.
So. A special meeting notice, the Board of Directors of the Westmifflin area school district will hold a special meeting via Zoom on Tuesday, July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty at five P M. Prevailing time. The agenda and instructions on how to view the meeting can be found at W W W dot W M A S D dot org. Twenty four hours prior to the meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to elect and appoint a district superintendent and any other business that comes before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Esper. Hearing it, hearing of the citizens.
Uh, we did.
What's that?
So go ahead.
In order to provide public comment, the following must be met, must include your name and home address in the email, must be a Westmifflin Whittaker Duquesne resident. Matter must have been discussed through the proper education channels. Direct email comments to the board president and or superintendent.
Mr. President, we have two comments. The first is from Diane Stinasik. Two eight oh three Glenny Lane Extension, Westmifflin P A one five one two two. She writes item three, election and appointment of superintendent. Section ten seventy three of the P A school code. And I'll read what she included in her comments. At a public meeting of the Board of School Directors occurring at least ninety days prior to the expiration date of the term of office of the district superintendent. The agenda shall include an item requiring affirmative action by five or more members of the Board of School Directors to notify the district superintendent that the board intends to retain him for a further term of three to five years or that another or other candidates will be considered for the office. In the event that the board fails to take such action at a public meeting of the Board of School Directors occurring at least ninety days prior to the expiration date of the term of office of the district superintendent. The term of office which he is currently serving shall be extended one time for a one year period upon the conclusion of which the term of office shall terminate unless the board has taken action prior to the end of the one year extension to retain the district superintendent for a further term as provided in this subsection. The notification shall not prevent the superintendent from being considered for or appointed to a further term of office, notwithstanding the consideration of other candidates.
I mean, Chris, do you want to jump in there? But.
Yeah, so. That law is not, does not retain in this instance, that would be if we were choosing not to retain Dr. Hoover. We gave Dr. Hoover the option of staying and entering into a new contract or sticking around for another year. He chose to retire. Uh, so therefore we did not give him notice that we didn't intend on renewing his contract. Um, because the board did not, um, you know, they would have been glad to to keep Dr. Hoover if he wanted to do an extension. Unfortunately, he chose to retire for us, but fortunately for him, completely understandable, uh, he chose to retire. So we could not have given the ninety day notice because we had no intention of of not moving forward with Dr. Hoover.
And it, and it was my impression that he still had one year left on his co- contract. If he would have chosen to stay, it's not like we were in the position where his contract was exhausting and we had to make a decision.
Correct. We would have had to make a decision to make him super though, because he could have.
Yeah.
For one year. We had explained that to him. We had talked to him about doing a contract or him just possibly staying on for another year. I don't want to get into personnel issues that are private to Dr. Hoover. But he chose to retire. Um, that wasn't a choice by this board to seek out a superintendent, um, that didn't include him. So once he let give us his notice to retire.
Which we took formal action on, correct?
Yes, we did. And so, um, when he gave us the letter, we took formal action. And and we did everything appropriately, in my opinion, as well as, I know this board has taken a very extensive approach to bringing in outside consultants to not shade or or, um, have a conflict with any of this situation. They, I believe, uh, also looked at all of this and, uh, believed that we were moving forward appropriately. And I'm very confident that this board took this, uh, search extremely serious and did so um, in the most professional manner possible. And as much as all of us would hate to see Dr. Hoover leave, um, you know, we wish him his best and, you know, I, I think that, you know, well, we, with the current situation, this is not the best scenario, but I feel like everybody moved forward appropriately.
Okay, well, um, so she did, uh, continue to write, you know, you did explain it, but I will read her comments. You are still in violation of Dr. Hoover resigned in March and no motion was made to look for a replacement. No motion was made in April either. It was not until May twenty first meetings was to motion to look for a new superintendent.
Again, we don't want to go into personnel matters with Dr. Hoover, but there was certain reasons why we didn't receive that notice. He was waiting on some financial documents to see whether or not it was financially acceptable for him to resign.
Okay, she continues, if his present district does not release him and you elect him, he should not be paid by us or his present district. Also with the federal lawsuit moving forward, and I want to, I want this definitely answered. If the court orders the previous superintendent to get his job back, we are obligated in Mr. Soul's contract into paying the remainder of his contract. Please answer truthfully. Item four.
I'm going to answer truthfully on that. We are not speaking about federal lawsuit. I have never, um, I'm not aware of anywhere in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that a superintendent has received their job back. Um, nor do I think that that's necessarily an, uh, obviously it's an issue in that lawsuit to, we have not been advised not to move forward by our federal lawyers, so we are going to do so. We'll do our best from district this time. Additionally, uh, the law is extensive on the releasing of a superintendent. There's, obviously she has the code. She can look at it worldwide by the law, rules and regulations over the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. As to, um, certainly he could come in on a per diem rate, uh, if he can, uh, when, uh, if he comes in evenings, weekends, sick days or vacation days, whatever he chooses to do, that's up to him. And whether or not his current district pays him, I'm not the solicitor there and I could not advise them on this.
Item four, motion to approve W M A S D phase school reopening health and safety plan. Could you please tell the public where this plan is located so that we have the ability to read the presentation? I understand it must be into the state D O E by the thirty first. The website only had the athletic information and the parents need to see this. Therefore, are you doing a PowerPoint presentation of the plan? And let's not forget our special ed kids so that their I E Ps and five oh fours are not violated. Parents can't make decisions because there's nothing out there for them to read in order to make their decisions. And that ends her comment.
Well, I just want to, on the legal end, and I'll let Mr. Solomon handle this question. Legal end, the only thing required to be filed by the thirty first is our safety plan, which I believe that, um, I've seen, um, what Dr. What, uh, Mr. Solomon is going to present tonight. But it's not official and can't be placed on the public website until it's officially approved by this board. So my, my recommendation would be if this board approves that tonight, then we post it on the district website.
Okay. Uh, next comment is from Stacy Domek, two five one three Jefferson Avenue, Westmifflin P A. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I have a couple of questions and concerns with the rise of COVID nineteen cases in Allegheny County. How are you going to use CARE Act fund to protect the students and staff? Second, is there a backup plan if Mr. Souls cannot be released from his current contract? Third, why are we starting Mr. Souls at at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars when his current position he at one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars? Fourth, I thought a certain school board member ran on no more five year contracts will be signed. Thanks.
Mr. Solomon, do you want to tell them when we applied for the CARES Act money, we had a show that's allocated. I'm sure Mr. Solomon can explain where those funds are being utilized.
Yes, basically, the vast majority of money went towards buying the new electronic devices at the elementary. Um, there was also a portion that we had to share with the non-public schools, the same way that Title One federal funding worked as well. Um, the last part, it was, you know, spread around through buying a different P P E uh, with opportunities if people need face masks or face shields and some other types of cleaning supplies.
Okay.
Is, and Chris, you could probably speak to, um, Mr. Souls's obligation, just in general, in your experience, uh, when a superintendent or administrator leaves another district, uh, their, their former district can hold them for a period of time legally.
Sure, legally, and I think the backup plan is that I believe the original motion to appoint Mr. Solomon to acting superintendent was until such time as a new superintendent could take that position. Um, obviously can't take positions always released by his current district. So, uh, Mr. Solomon will continue in that superintendent position until such time as Mr. Souls is able to to take full time, um, employment here in the district. Um, what Blairfield Salzberg will or won't do is beyond our, um, reach and and knowledge. Uh, I don't know. I haven't spoken to Mr. Souls about that, um, or anyone on the Blairfield Salzberg School District as to whether or not they'll release him or when they'll release him. Maybe he can speak to that, uh, later on with the board. And, but there is a plan in place and Mr. Solomon has drafted our back to school plan, who has been, uh, meeting with all the proper officials and been acting as superintendent since June thirtieth, will continue that position until Mr. Souls can take it, his position. Uh, of course, he's elected this and appointed this evening. As far as his salary goes, uh, that was negotiated, I believe, for Mr. Souls and, uh, with our outside consultant. Um, I wasn't part of that negotiations and, you know, was part of personnel negotiations, how they came to that number. I'm sure there were many factors.
Okay, good.
Yep. Is that, is that?
Is that all, Jeff? Yes, that's all the, uh, public comment, Mr. President.
Okay, um, moving on, election and appointment of superintendent.
Solomon.
Snacking.
I have a motion by Mr. Marshall, second by Mr. Alexandrov. Um, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And D'Senzo.
Yes.
Um, before we move on, Mr. Esper, we actually have Mr. Souls here, uh, joining us. Um, you, you know, at this time, I'd like to, you know, extend an opportunity for him to to make any type of statement or address the board and or community. You there, Mr. Souls?
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
I'd like to thank the board, uh, especially with the majority and the nine oh vote coming in. That really shows you have some confidence and trust. Hopefully get in there and we'll start building some real positive relationships. I'm anxious to get started. Or with Mr. Solomon, Mr. Esper, uh, get the admin team going and as well as I know Westmifflin has a quality professional staff and support staff that, um, I, I, I'm looking forward to working with and alongside. And again, I appreciate this, um, opportunity that you have given me, be the leader of of your district. And again, expound on all the great things you're already doing. I know Mr. Solomon's doing a lot of great things, uh, from his position. But, uh, to expound on those and and, uh, keep moving, uh, everyone forward with academic success. So I thank the board for this opportunity and I look forward to getting started. There was a question there about my departure time. Uh, with the vote going through, uh, I will turn in my resignation tonight. We will, uh, put an exit plan together with the Blairsville Salzberg School District and a transition plan coming into Westmifflin area. And I will have that out to the board here shortly. We will probably discuss this in the next two nights, uh, here at, uh, Blairsville. And then we'll have an exit plan ready to go to come on board there.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Souls?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Thanks a lot, Mr. Souls. We look forward to, uh, to having you in district as soon as possible.
I appreciate it.
Yep. Before we move forward, I also just think it's appropriate at this time to thank, uh, Dr. Diarcangelo for his assistance through this process. I'll echo what Chris just said, um, you know, him being a part of it really added a professionalism. He involved all the stakeholders in the district and in the community and really gave them a sense of, uh, of belonging in the decision that we made and, um, you know, it, it was, it was a great experience for, for me and I, 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 I think I speak for the board in, in having his, um, his experience in, in, in his recommendations, uh, throughout the process. So again, thanks, Dr. Diarcangelo for all, all your help.
Okay, um, moving on, Mr. President, I would respectfully ask for a motion second in approval on the following items. Item A, Board of Directors, number one, is recommended the board approve the Westmifflin area school district's phase school reopening health and safety plan for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year.
I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blazevich.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marshall and, uh, Mr. Solomon, at this time, would you like to maybe highlight what this plan, uh, was planned, really lays out for the district moving forward?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, I know this time is filled with much anxiety and emotions. I appreciate the support and patience of the Westmifflin area school district community and to the many groups that assisted with determination and cooperation to create a solid plan that is tailored to fit the needs of our students. Before I summarize some of the key points of the reopening plan, I just want to remind everyone that under the current circumstances, the plan can be changed at any time in the next few weeks. Two questions that I want to address before moving on is number one, remote learning versus cyber. To truly answer this question correctly, you have to take into account many factors of a given student, such as age, social and emotional characteristics and other things. So just to simplify, remote learning is short term. Looks like a typical Westmifflin class workload and is a smoother transition back to brick and mortar. Cyber is more long term and has a closely related but different curriculum. The second question that I've been hearing a lot is why the July thirty first deadline? The reason the date was chosen is to collect data and evaluate the strategic placement of staff before the school year starts. There could be anywhere from two hundred to fifteen hundred students to choose remote learning. I don't believe it's in the students or the staff's best interest to make any final decisions until all that data is collected. Now for some highlights of the health and safety plan and its four major components. Number one, facility cleaning. It's headed by Sandy Wells and the Director of Building and Grounds. All the facilities will be disinfecting clean as per the C D C and the state health guidelines. For social distancing, that was headed by our building principals and Janette Quinn, the Director of Food. Sharing of materials can be managed by assigning own items to students to be kept in a desk. Also lunches will have reduced meal options and offer more grab and go items. The third major component is monitoring student and staff health headed by the district nurses and building principals. School devices, health related items and a short list of other items will only be allowed in the buildings when the students come in. Different scenarios and the actions to take regarding an individual with COVID nineteen symptoms can be found in the A I U's decision tree. That will be placed on our website. The last component is other considerations headed by Leah Silves, the Director of People's Services. P P E or personal protective equipment. This is the official name for masks or face shields. Students may remove their face covering when in the building when they are either eating or drinking in spaced at least six feet apart, such as the cafeteria. Another way would be seated at desk at least six feet apart. So there will be opportunities to remove their masks. Students that do not wear a face covering will be relocated from other students and referred to our remote learning unless a medical exemption from a doctor is provided. Any special ed, or any special education or five oh four students regarding a service delivery question or issue should contact the Director of People's Services. Additional supports needed for students with disabilities will be evaluated on an individual basis. In closing, the following reopening plan is voted passed tonight and the A I U decision tree will be placed on the website tomorrow morning. Any specific question dealing with students, please contact your building principals. I would like to thank the school board for their time and support.
Mr. Solomon, can I ask two questions?
Yes.
Is there, um, first, is there any consideration to the town hall that I suggested discussion with you and Mr. Souls about possibly doing like a question and answer session for all the questions that are going to be pouring in from parents?
And Ms. Singler, I'd, I'd be happy to, uh, work with Mr. Souls on that and come up with a good game plan to give to you.
Um, thank you. And the second question is, um, when will we have some sort of determination or some sort of guidance as to what the deciding factor is going to be for the beginning of school?
Well, a lot of it has to do with various different things. The first one is, of course, Governor Wolf. Uh, that's what he is. Uh, any determination he would make would end up changing that. Also, uh, you know, if we collect the data, we have a abundant of students that would, you know, want to take remote learning, that would be another factor. Uh, anything that would be C D C bound or, uh, maybe something from the state unions. Unfortunately, the list goes on, but those could all play a factor in changing this plan within days or within the next two to three weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Solomon, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so the two options, the in-building option and the remote option, are those five days a week?
The in-building, yes, that would be five days a week.
Okay.
You know, and like I said, uh, you know, from, in the reason why we're progressing in this manner is, is still going off the surveys, which, uh, you know, it was over seventy percent that wanted in-building education. There was, uh, eight percent that was undecided. So, and there was twenty two percent that wanted remote learning or some sort of cyber. So that, that was the basis of the creation of the plan.
Got it. And then if you choose remote learning to start with, you, I think you have a period of nine weeks where you could stay, you would stay in that, but then after that nine weeks, you could transition back into the buildings. Is that true?
Yes, that's true. Now, if there was some, uh, you know, underlying circumstances that would, uh, need to be dealt with, there would be a, of course, it'd be a principal meeting set up to, uh, walk through to try to correct any issues taking place. Um, the, the reason being is, uh, you know, if it's a back and forth, back and forth, you know, that's, that's not going to be good for, of course, the student, but, you know, it's going to be very hard at that time to effectively educate, especially in, in these type of environments.
Or plan for.
Exactly.
Mr. Solomon, is the, um, the remote learning, are teachers going to be heavily involved? I think that's one thing a lot of parents have concerns about. So it's, uh, because in reality, we're offering three options, the go to school, the remote learning, and then the straight cyber school. And I think that's the best, and you guys came up with this on your own, and I think it's great because it covers as much as possible of people's concerns. Uh, is, is, will the teachers be involved in the remote learning portion since the students are consistently engaged?
Yes, uh, to, to tell you the truth, you know, I, I've been, uh, communicating with the union leaders. And as we would, uh, move forward, I think that, you know, Mr. Souls, I'm sure, and myself would continue talks with them to try to make the best scenario possible for everybody involved.
Does anybody else have anything else?
I just had one, I just want to clarify, Dave, for you and, and, and for Jeff, that that our teachers, Westmifflin teachers are teaching the remote learning courses, correct?
Yes.
In that, in that curriculum, so if I had twins, for example, and they're in the same grade and they're in the same class, but one wanted to stay home and one wanted to go into the building, they would be at the same point, three weeks into the semester or into the first nine weeks, they would be at the same point of that curriculum, essentially.
Very similar, exactly.
Okay.
I just want to make.
Cyber schools.
Not the cyber school, Mr. Blazevich. Cyber school is on a different curriculum. Some people need to be aware of that, so they're choosing. They will not be on the same curriculum as, as they're.
Yeah, I understand that. I, I was asking about remote learning with Westmifflin teachers versus in the building learning with the same teachers, that the curriculum and co- the curriculum, um, velocity and how they cover it week to week would be very similar.
Yes.
Thank you.
I did, I, can I, can I just make a comment here if I could? Um, the pandemic team, I know I've asked in the past and I'm just stating now that I would like to be placed on that team. If I can, please, if I have the support of the board.
Oh, very good.
Yeah, sure. I don't have a problem. Mr. Solomon.
I don't, I don't think we had a board member on there. Um, and so, I mean, this is why it is the vice president, it makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? All right, uh, Mr. Esper, roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
Okay, item four.
On the, uh, on the, uh, district website now? Well, when the meeting's over? Must be placed on the district website?
Yes, I will stay.
Mr. Solomon said that it will be on there by tomorrow morning, Mr. Marshall.
Yeah. Okay, um, item four B minutes, number one.
I do have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kostalnik, second by Mrs. White. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And D'Senzo.
Yes.
Mr. President, that so concludes my report.
Thank you. Athletic personnel?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Uh, for athletic personnel, we have a five A one resignation and a five B one through seven for hiring.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattis. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostalnik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
D'Senzo.
Yes.
All right, uh, any, does anybody have anything for old business?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, our past meeting that we just had, we hired a seventh assistant for the high school football position that was unpaid. And I don't see it on the agenda today. And since there's no contract and no M O U for this position, how are we moving forward with these positions?
I mean, I, I, I don't recall it being unpaid, Mrs. Engler. Is that, I, I know there was a discussion that we, you know, there would be an if, but did we, did we officially make that an un, I mean, we can't make that an unpaid position. I don't believe so, so I, I don't know. I'd have to defer to Chris on that, but.
So our current contract does not provide for a seven football coach. The current contract and supplemental list only has five football coaches, from my understanding. We probably need to sit down with the union because myself and Mr. Esper looked at that, and there are many other things missing and on there that are old that we probably need to look at with the union. That was my understanding before that that was looked at. We were in teacher negotiations by Mr. Dr. Hoover and Mr. Smart, but obviously, they're not here to talk to that, so I don't know what happened with that. So I know there's like a gymnastics coach on there that we've never had. The kindness club person is not on there. I believe there's another junior National Honor Society that's not on there. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Esper. I think that there's a couple of things missing from there. It's my understanding that there has been multiple coaches paid since 2010. And so there are things that we need to sit down with the union and look at, look at that list very carefully and then bring that to the board and go over that and make sure the board's okay with any of those changes. And before we would actually approach the union, and if we want to make any changes, we would have to do an M R U with, with the union at this time.
Well, Krishna, wouldn't there have to have been something like that in place for the board to be able to pay these additional coaches for the last 10 years?
So there should have been, but there is not. So we've now realized that, that I can't speak to that. I wasn't here in 2010, like, I don't think any of us were possibly here in 2010. So unfortunately, I don't know why that's been done, but that's been the past practice. I believe that that was prior to Mr. Steele even being a football coach as well. So we need to, we need to get a clear list of what our supplementals are and, and have what we're actually paying on there. And what doesn't exist, let's take them off. So we really need to be very clear about, sorry.
Okay, but, but I guess my, my question is that the fall sports start in, officially start in two weeks. So we're obviously not going to have that wrapped up within that, or our next voting meeting isn't before then. I mean, how are, I mean, if there's past precedent that these, we paid those many assistant coaches.
That would be a grievance taken up by the union if we didn't pay someone, and they could argue past practice. We're going to do a legal issue that I would prefer we would talk about in executive session. But at this point, my recommendation is that you provide it to a committee, Mr. D'Senzo, and we sit down with, certainly sit down with Mr. Stevenson, and certainly maybe sit down with a couple of our building principals and see what we're actually utilizing off that list, what we're not utilizing off that list. And then bring that to the board, and then we can have a discussion about, about the appropriate supplemental list. And then if we want to make changes, we would have to go to the union to get the MOU.
Thank you, Krishna.
I don't foresee them having an issue with, with any of those changes. I, I think that they understand that some of these positions have been paid for for years, and some of these positions have been vacant for years. We just need to clean the list up.
Understood.
And I think the one thing that we did is the athletic committee, when we brought in Coach Steele, we, the assistants filled in who were the assistants under Coach Brazo. And I even went back and looked in that 2010 meeting minutes, seeing, yeah, they approved seven paid assistants. The prior year, they approved five paid assistants for Coach Brazo, and I didn't see anything in between that switched things one way or the other. But the prior board set a precedent of having seven paid assistant coaches.
I think too, though, we just need to do a better documentation of what we actually have on, as far as, again, inventory of open positions and filled positions and how much they're paid. And I think that's what the contract is supposed to represent, and it's just not reflective of reality. So we need to true that up.
Great. Does anybody else have any other old business? Any new business? Do I have a meeting, a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattis, motion adjourned. Thanks, guys.